I'd like to call the August 18th regular Des Moines City Council meeting to order. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll Councilmember Kaplan, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington is absent tonight. Is there a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Motion was made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Bangs. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Pass is six zero. Let the record show that all other council members are present. Is there any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
Before we go to comments from the public, I have something I need to bring forward. The City Council is aware of the rumors surrounding the selection of Michael Mathias as their city manager. Michael was the subject of intensive vetting process when he was hired as the Assistant City Manager in 2014, and he was again thoroughly reviewed by the City Council, city staff, and members of the public throughout the city manager hiring process. A public's records request was received seeking information on Michael's employment. That request was fulfilled to its entirety, and to my knowledge, there is nothing in the response to that request that in any way reflects negatively on Michael's ability to serve as city manager. Additionally, contrary to rumors, there have been no formal complaints to Human Resources regarding Michael. Anytime there is a change, there's going to be uncertainty, and that can lead to rumors and accusations. But Michael has proven himself as a successful Assistant City Manager, and with the full support of council, staff, and hopefully the public, I'm confident that he will prove himself a successful city manager. At this point, we will take comments from the public. Comments are made from the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Organizations will have five. Please note that the Woodmont Commercial Zone Agenda item will not have a public comment, period. If you wish to comment... What? We have a mistake.
Oops, sorry. That was from last time. My apologies.
Okay, quick cross out. So, you'll have three minutes. Tony, it had to happen on your last night.
Of course it did. Well done.
Okay. It was in bold. Okay. Let me start over. We're at the point in the meeting where we'll take comments from the public. Comments are made from the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Individuals will have three minutes, and organizations will have five minutes to speak. The first person that has signed up to speak is Dan Brewer.
Thank you for indulging me with this. It's a little strange to have staff speak under public comment, but I wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank Tony for your support of our department over these last years and for giving me an opportunity to serve as Director for Planning Building Public Works. It's not a secret to anybody that we've struggled financially for many years, and one of the things that I'll remember most about you and your leadership for the city is the chances that you took to get us to where we are today in development of the Des Moines Creek Business Park. It was a lot of leadership and convincing of this council and other councils to stick with the plan, and it literally has changed our financial outlook for the future, and we have you to thank for that. So, I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Our next speakers are Natalie and Lila Nutting.
I'm Natalie Nutting.
And I'm Lila Nutting. And we live at 20819 Fourth Avenue South, Des Moines, Washington, 98198. We had our lemonade stand on Monday. Surprisingly, we had Q-13 stop by, if we weren't expecting. We would like to thank the council and community for stopping by and having a cup or just making a donation, and we raised $3,941.89. And we also want to thank the police officers and firefighters. Thank you so much. I also want to say, Melissa, your cookies were awesome.
Thank you.
Ladies, would you please join me at the podium? I would like to recognize you. Do you recognize me? We were so touched as a police department and as a community with your actions. The staff decided that you two deserve the Community Star Award for 2016. Let me just... The recipients of this award were selected because of their dedication to improving public safety and the quality of life in our community. Staff from the Des Moines Police Department nominated Natalie and Lila for this award in 2016 because of their generous support of the Des Moines Police Foundation program. Most recently, the Nutting Lemonade Fundraiser, which was set up to help bring officers with the department much-needed training and will fund the 2016 Shop With A Cop event. Thank you both for your commitment to furthering our mission.
I will apologize in advance to anybody who has to follow those last two presentations. Wow. Our next person signed up to speak is Gary Peterson.
Hi, I'm Gary Peterson at 509 South 222nd. And all your city councils, I want to talk to you about the Fifth Street, and I'm getting tired of this, and I want speed bumps on the road, and I've been hearing other people down at Redondo. Somebody says there's speed bumps all over Redondo. I'd like to have them, because last couple, this last weeks, there was two cars going up Fifth Street and down Fifth Street, going so, so, super fast, and somebody's going to get killed. And if it doesn't, if it doesn't happen, I'm going to get a chair out there with my own cone, and I'm going to have a sign that says "Slow Down," and I'll have a cone on top of my head. And this has got to stop, because down at that park where cars park along the sideways where the cones are at, they're going super fast, and people open their doors and they're going to smack into them. Is there any way you guys can please put speed bumps there, or, because lowrider cars? Like I talked to Pat Pena, and you're going to do something about it, but it never happened. But I talked to, I called the city of Des Moines, I pushed 911, and I talked to them, and they didn't do nothing about it. They never came down, and I was waiting for the gate, by the gate. But something's going to happen. It's going to cause a major accident, and somebody's going to get killed. And I want to take this taken care of. If you guys can please do something about it.
Gary, when you and I spoke on this, what I said I would do about that is get the engineering department to take a look at this and see what options were available, and I have done that. At this point, I have to yield to the traffic engineers and what they do, because I'm not a traffic engineer, and the council doesn't have the authority to turn around and say, "Put a speed bump in." So, again, possibly, under the administration report tonight, we can get a response from someone from Dan Brewer's department, just as to general thoughts about where we are and what our options are.
Okay, because if it doesn't happen, I'm going to put a chair out there, sit down, and have a cone on top of my head, and have a slow sign, and...
Sitting in the road on a chair with a cone on your head is not a good idea. I just, I understand you're frustrated, and please understand that there's a process, and I have to, I have to turn this over to the engineers. There's no one here at the council that can put a speed bump in. But we, it's not that we're not hearing you. We are conveying exactly what your concerns are. We're supporting you when you come here to talk to us. We understand the concern. I don't know what the appropriate solution is. I have to look, I have to trust the traffic engineers.
So, what I'd like to do is if we are prepared to make a few comments about it tonight, Gary, we will, but I think what would be really valuable is if staff were able to make a short presentation to council at a future council meeting that says, "Here's everything we've done on your street to try to slow people down. Here's the nature of your street. Here's why we're doing what we're doing. Here's why there's certain things we can't do," just so council gets a comprehensive understanding of the entire situation. So, I think we'll be ready to make a couple of comments tonight, but I think a future meeting where we can really break it down for everybody would be valuable. Okay?
Okay, and I've been really helping you guys, because I watch that corner every closely and everything, and I'm watching really closely, and I don't want nothing to happen. If there's an accident, I'm going to go out there and see if somebody's injured or anything, and I'll call 911, and I hope they come. But I want this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Manuela Jeanette. Did I get that correct? I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm Manuela Jeanette, 24909 Thirteenth Place South, Des Moines, Washington. I'm here on behalf of the Multi Service Center, where I'm the Housing Director, and I want to thank the city for your ongoing support of our family homeless shelter. You've been supporting it for many years now. As you can see, when you drive around, walk around, homelessness has not ended, even though there had been a plan to end homelessness. I think most of us knew that that was next to impossible. There's still far too many homeless and needs compared to what the ability is to house at all levels, whether that's temporary housing or permanent housing with support or without support services. So, our shelter is just a piece within the homeless system throughout King County, so every little bit of support we can get is always truly helpful, so we do appreciate that. I do want to share the story of one of the families that we have helped. We're still helping her. Her journey is not over, but she's a single mother with three children that had been sleeping in her car, and she got her way into our family shelter, which is not an easy feat, because there's only so much room and far more people who need it. We had been working with her, not really seeing a lot of progress. It took about six months of working with a case manager before she was willing to open up that she had actually been, her cellphone was her contact number for being a call girl. She was addicted to drugs and just had a lot of issues. And, you know, a lot of people can just say, "Well, that's, you know, her choice, what she's been doing." But really, in working with her, knowing what her background was, her journey to get to that point, you know, she had been molested by her father. She had been molested by others as well beyond that, and eventually found herself in the sex trade. Not a place she necessarily wanted to be, but trapped in how do you get out? So, once she was able to finally share that with the case manager, movement could be made to go forward, and that was a lot for her to do. And the first thing that case manager convinced her of was, "Change your phone number." You know, that was the phone number where everything was happening, and that just made a huge difference, was able to get into treatment, was connected with programs and agencies that work with women in the sex trade industry to help them change their lives around. And with time, we were able to move her into one of the apartments that the Multi Service Center owns that has homeless set-aside units, so she could continue to be case managed even beyond our shelter. So, without programs like this, you know, a family, a woman with three children sleeping in her car, wouldn't be able to move forward and get to where she needs to be. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Bill Lynn Scott.
Bill Lynn Scott, 22335 Sixth Avenue South. Mayor, council, and citizens, just a couple of thank yous. A thank you to Tony, and congratulations on your retirement and years of service here. And thank you to Joe and the Marina staff. We've had a couple of neighborhood, community, public meetings down there to share the plans for paid parking. It's been very well attended. I think we had 40 people in each session. We have another session in September, on the 21st, at 5:30. So, if you haven't attended, you ought to come down and listen. We learn more each time, because the plans are progressing, but it's given kind of those that have come, and you can imagine, we've got neighbors that are quite close to the Marina, to actually better understand the physical layout. We've done some walkthroughs to see where gates are. We have some suggestions that are rolling in to Joe that I think really will make it, make a difference and make things better. And maybe one suggestion ties a little bit to Gary's comment. We know that when that paid parking goes into place, traffic patterns are going to change down there, and you won't be able to go in the Marina north to south. You're going to either come into the south lot or the north lot. So, on Sixth and Seventh, we're going to see some changes there in the number and volume of traffic, and that kind of affects Cliff Avenue. It's going to affect that little strip of Fifth Avenue, and parking will also become a concern, because some people will still want to find free parking, and we're going to hear more about Pokemon, I think, in our briefing. You walk with that program, and so them starting on Seventh Avenue, parking there and walking into the Marina is not a big deal. It's kind of the, part of the process, is my understanding. So, if you're going to have the traffic engineers kind of look at that Fifth Avenue, you might want to kind of get them connected to a mitigation plan for the paid parking as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mick Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, distinguished guests. I have a copy here of the city manager selection that was for immediate release on August 9th, 2016, and I believe all this in here is correct. I'm not going to read it all, because you cut me down on my time. The Des Moines City Council remains committed to finding an innovative, collaborative, and qualified leader for the city manager position to help this rapidly developing community achieve its economic goals while ensuring that the needs and expectations of this increasingly diverse citizenry are being met. SGR, the nation's search firm contacted by the city to provide a comprehensive scope of executive searches, will continue to assist the city manager hiring process at no additional fee, and I believe it was 50,000 or 60,000 that the city had to pay so far. The city council will consider all potential opinions and take formal action at an open meeting, public meeting, in accordance with the state law. I didn't see any meeting calls. In what the mayor said last week, and I quote this, it's, I'd like to highlight a couple of things. He said, "The candidate did not receive any additional after the interview that were, any information after the interview weren't already aware of before the third-party process." I also would like to highlight, the candidate never saw the city's offer. The council did everything in good faith and appropriately. I did not have, I did have a conversation for about an hour after they started to indicate some concerns. The conversation gave me no indication of direction or reason. They just asked a whole slew of questions. It was a great conversation, from laughter to unettable. I couldn't read it. I couldn't get it. Enjoyable conversation, but in my opinion, and this is my opinion, it was probably, it was pretty apparent that the candidate was having some anxiety about assuming the role of top leadership position in the city, and I think that probably led to their withdrawal. You used the term "they" and "their" three times. Did you have a meeting with just him, or did you have a meeting with other people?
It was a phone conversation.
It was a phone, so just between you and him. But why would you use "they" three times? Wouldn't it be Mr. Nichols, or?
Well, I was trying...
Him, or he, or something like that? Okay, well, then Tim came in, our attorney. He puts us, this puts us in a tough spot, Open Public Means Act of Washington State. City council can't take action back there in executive session. They couldn't vote on a candidate, so when they came out here and voted, that was what was required to do, select a candidate. So, we can't select a candidate privately and negotiate. We really, that, so that really does get us, put us in a difficult situation, because we have to make announcement public when the city council makes that decision. We were put on hold last week for an hour. First, it was 30 minutes, we came out, it was 20, and then 10. You come out, and you just floored us all with the announcement that you're going to vote for the city manager. Am I reading this wrong? I mean, you went back in executive session, and you come out here, and you voted, and the only person that stood his ground was Robbie Back. I just want some answers. This doesn't sound like an open, this doesn't sound like we had an open meeting.
Mr. Johnson, you...
Well, I know you're going to cut me time, so, that's what I, I want some answers. I think we all want some answers. Thank you.
Elie Larkin.
Good evening, Mayor Matt Pena and council, and gee, Tony, we're getting a little gray after all these years. I'm gone, now you're going. Well, you know, it's, at least you give us three minutes. Seattle City Council only gives us two minutes, and you have to pay to park down there. Hmm. So, there's a plethora of things that I could speak about, from pay parking to, but I'm going to get right to the Pokemon Go. Do you realize that is the biggest mind-program experiment that has ever happened on the planet? I've been studying what's been going on with all of these smartphones that I call stupid phones, and I got into it when I was a water commissioner, and I began investigating smart meters and the wireless technology. And I shared with Matt a flyer that's now being circulated about the Wi-Fi in the schools and how it's impacting our children. I do have copies for all of you, if you'd like a copy of that, which is the campaign we are mounting now, and I'm going to be spreading this flyer all over. But back to Pokemon Go. It's a self-directed weapon that people are holding in their hand because of the electromagnetic radiation and microwave frequencies that is shooting into their bodies. Ah, well, one of the activists that I work with, he had it in the United States. He now lives down in the Amazon, but he just released a video that really connected the dots and stretched my mind, and you know, once it's stretched, it won't go back. You can find this documentary on YouTube, and it's called Pokemon Go Pornography and the Depopulation Agenda. This is bigger than we thought. So, I understand that's going to be on the agenda tonight, that you want to stop it in the city of Des Moines, because it has become an effing inconvenience to every single one of us that live around here. In fact, when I take my walks down there, you know, I'm walking by people, and, you know, they'll notice you, and I'll smile at them, and I just go, "Zombies, zombies." You'd be surprised at how many smiles I get. But not only maybe is the city of Des Moines going to take this action to stop it, my granddaughter in Salt Lake City, who works for the Tracy Aviary at Liberty Park, they have become a Pokemon Go site, and it's become really a hazard to the birds that live there, and they are in the process of stopping it. I had dinner with my nephew and some others the other evening. He's the manager of the Acacia Funeral Home Cemetery in Mausoleum on Lake City Way. They're mad. They put them in cemeteries. People are going into cemeteries to find Pokemon, and to me, that is just so...
Ellie Larkin.
Good evening, Mayor Matt Peena and Council. And gee, Tony, we're getting a little gray after all these years.
You are.
I'm gone, now you're going. Well, you know, it's, at least you give us three minutes. Seattle City Council only gives us two minutes, and you have to pay to park down there. Hmm. So there's a plethora of things that I could speak about, from pay parking to, but I'm going to get right to the Pokemon Go. Do you realize that is the biggest mind-program experiment that has ever happened on the planet? I've been studying what's been going on with all of these smartphones that I call stupid phones. And I got into it when I was a water commissioner, and I began investigating smart meters and the wireless technology. And I shared with Matt a flyer that's now being circulated about the Wi-Fi in the schools and how it's impacting our children. I do have copies for all of you, if you'd like a copy of that, which is the campaign we are mounting now, and I'm going to be spreading this flyer all over. But back to Pokemon Go. It's a self-directed weapon that people are holding in their hand because of the electromagnetic radiation and microwave frequencies that is shooting into their bodies. Ah. Well, one of the activists that I work with, he had it in the United States. He now lives down in the Amazon. But he just released a video that really connected the dots and stretched my mind. And once it's stretched, it won't go back. You can find this documentary on YouTube, and it's called Pokemon Go: Pornography and the Depopulation Agenda. This is bigger than we thought. So I understand that's going to be on the agenda tonight, that you want to stop it in the city of Des Moines, because it has become an effing inconvenience to every single one of us that live around here. In fact, when I take my walks down there, you know, I'm walking by people, and, you know, they'll notice you, and I'll smile at them, and I just go, zombies, zombies. You'd be surprised at how many smiles I get. But not only maybe is the city of Des Moines going to take this action to stop it, my granddaughter in Salt Lake City, who works for the Tracy Aviary at Liberty Park, they have become a Pokemon Go site. And it's become really a hazard to the birds that live there, and they are in the process of stopping it. I had dinner with my nephew and some others the other evening. He's the manager of the Acacia Funeral Home Cemetery in Mausoleum on Lake City Way. They're mad. They put them in cemeteries. People are going into cemeteries to find Pokemon. And to me, that is just so, so wrong. So I would like to applaud you if you are going to step up and put a stop to Pokemon Go in the Des Moines Marina Beach Park and around here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last person we had signed up. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to address the council? Seeing no one approach, I will move forward. And we will begin with board and committee reports and council member comments, starting with council member, former mayor Kaplan.
On Tuesday, the South. Tuesday, the South County Area Transportation Board Skateboard Met at C-Tech City Hall. And on the agenda was conversations regarding Sound Transit and the Federal Way Light Rail Extension, and discussion about Sound Transit III and how that would impact the timing as to when a station would open up in the Kent Des Moines High Line area. If Sound Transit III passes, it would be 2024, which would be a year later. But 2023, if Sound Transit III doesn't pass, on the other hand, it would build, it would have the funding to get everything down to Federal Way, which would open in 2024. So it would all open up in 2024. That was predominant issue that was talked about at the skateboard meeting. This morning, council member Bangs and I attended, along with staff and some community activists, a Welcome Back to Midway, excuse me, Pacific Middle School event that they are planning for the start of school, which, if you can believe, is actually two weeks from today. What they want to do is they want to find adults, particularly male role models, to be able to come and welcome the kids back to school. Nothing fancy, they just want to create a tunnel of people to smile and shake hands with the kids and fist bump with the kids and shake hands, you know, high-five the kids and welcome them back to school. Let them know that the community cares about them. And set a tenor for the school year so that it starts off to a different, a different approach than the last year. The other aspect of that is that there is going to be an open house that the school is having on September twenty-second. And on that day, they're going to have a barbecue, I believe at five o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, and they're looking for people to come and get involved there as well. So I strongly encourage you, if you want to be a role model for even just a little bit of time, come to Pacific Middle School at seven AM. We're working on making sure that there's parking at Midway Covenant Church, so you can walk the couple of blocks, because there won't be any parking by the time that the teachers are there and the buses start rolling in. So please, please come, seven o'clock on Thursday, September first. I'm sure council member Bangs is probably a little more to add to what I've said. This afternoon, we had an ad hoc franchise committee meeting. On the agenda for that was conversations regarding a proposal by Century Link, who is looking to put out competing services with Comcast in the way of entertainment. So there may actually be some competition in town fairly soon. We're going to be, we looked at the draft proposal and gave some feedback to staff so they can work on that. We also talked about Comcast. Our franchise agreement expired with them back in two thousand and three, but we've been operating under that ever since. And then we also talked about the possibility of extending the option of franchise agreements, same franchise agreements we did for the Sewer and Water Districts to Lake Haven and Water District Fifty-four. I received an email today from staff indicating, sad, on a sad note, the passing of Stan Wilks. Stan Wilks and Arlene Knight were the owners and operators of Classic Yachts here down in the Marina. Stan was eighty-seven, former sales representative. He operated a boatyard in the Marina for a number of years before Classic Yachts, served in the US, was a veteran, served in the US Army. And obviously, he'll be missed. What I'd like to suggest is that out of the Hearts and Minds Fund that we send, some flowers to Arlene down in Arizona, if we could.
I agree. I think we should.
And then I have a couple motions I would like to make in relation to conversation we had at our budget retreat. I move to suspend the remaining two thousand sixteen employee furloughs in excess of forty-eight hours for regular employees and an equal proportionate share for part-time employees until the city council can discuss and take action on the item at the September eighth city council meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
I move to direct staff to prepare a resolution for September eighth discontinuing the remaining two thousand sixteen furlough requirements for non-represented employees and to pursue an equitable end to the remaining furloughs for represented employees.
Second.
And I will state for the record before the first motion was made by council member Kaplan, seconded by council member Musser. This motion is also made by council member Kaplan, seconded by council member Musser. Is there any discussion?
I'm just glad we're doing this. The employees took the hit, and they were the first ones to really make a sacrifice because this was needed. And now that financially we're in better shape, I think getting rid of these furloughs as soon as possible is the right thing to do. So I'm glad we're doing this for the employees' sake.
Anyone else? I would just like to, I'm going to kind of dovetail on your comments, council member Back. You know, it was a, we went to furloughs because we needed to build our reserves, and it was a financial tool. And the one thing about a tool is that when you've accomplished your objective, you put it away. It was pleasant, we knew things were moving in the right direction when we got to our budget retreat. It was great news to hear that we had hit the objectives, and we were in a much better place. And I think that we owe a great deal of gratitude to all the employees who dealt with it and still help keep our city running. Some of them even gave extra effort, even though they were already giving up a day. I was humbled when we had to do it. I'm humbled by the quality of the staff that we have here, and I just want to extend my gratitude one more time. With that, if there are no other comments, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
And then just one last thing from a personal comments. I said them yesterday, but I'll repeat them again. Tony, I appreciate all your work for the city over the years. I think, I think that what stands out in my mind is how your even temperament kept things on an even keel when things weren't. Whether it was the Niskali earthquake, when you were the assistant city manager and Bob Olander was out of town, or whether it was when Steve Underwood was gunned down and Bob Olander was out of town, or any number of other things, whether Marina fire, some other things, where it's very easy to get wrapped up in the heat of the moment, and you need that cool, stable hand. And so for me personally, as well as my time as mayor, and as I said yesterday, I feel passionate about things, and so I tend to be a little more emotionally on the rollercoaster when it comes to expressing myself. And there's times where you need staff people to provide that, that even flow of things. It's meant a lot to me personally, and I just want to thank you for your service to the city. So, thanks.
Council member Back.
So real quick, we did have the environment committee meeting tonight, and Parametrics presented the proposed municipal code revisions for integrating low-impact development. This is required by Department of Ecology. So there's just some things in our municipal codes that the language needs to be tweaked a little bit and needs to be more consistent. So we went over a number of these issues tonight. Hopefully, there'll be a rough draft that we can look at by the end of the year, but I just want to say thanks to Dan and to Parametrics for working on that. And then yesterday, this is the last thing, is yesterday I was glad to go to Tony's retirement party, and it was kind of cool to see some faces that I totally forgot about that were here way back in the day. And it was also interesting hearing you, Tony, talk about some of the early days becoming city manager and the turbulence you went through. So as you remember, I ran for council in two thousand and one, and I lost in that primary. And I'm kind of glad I did now, because council that got sworn in in two thousand and two, that's when all hell kind of broke loose. And you were the city manager, but it was interesting, you really had to maintain composure being in a new position. So I'm really proud of you for your efforts. And then, kind of like what Dave said, but you've had a real even keel temperament, and you've been really fair with me. And as you know, I ran again in two thousand and three against an incumbent and in two thousand and five against an incumbent. And these are people that you were accustomed to working for. But as a candidate, you were always fair and impartial with me during the whole process. And all in all, over the last fifteen years, every time I've called you on things that I needed answers to or some advice or some input, you always returned the call, and you've always been square with me. So I just want to say thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, and happy retirement. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Council member Bangs.
I have no report, but I wanted to add on to Dave's description of our meeting today. The need for volunteers in the schools is extremely imperative. We heard some stories today that I had absolutely no idea occurred. My daughter is thirty-seven. I haven't had to deal with school in forever. But these kids need to see positive adults in, not just in terms of the first day of school, but throughout the school year, where they can see positive role models in the hallways, in the restrooms, in, you know, anywhere that they're congregating so that they can at least see that there's enough concern that people would be there, or adults would be there, to make sure that there's no harm done to either, you know, either side of whatever group they belong to, because that's pretty much what goes on in some of the schools. The principal, assistant principal are extremely excited about this effort that we're making, and they're also looking forward to the consistency of that can possibly happen in terms of having more adults in the school during the days. Now, that's not every day, because of course, we all work. So anyone interested, we hope to see you at seven o'clock on the first, and we'll probably congregate outside the middle school and get bad, we'll all get badges and then sort of be shepherded to the school buses as they come off. So give it some great thought there because it's truly needed. The September twenty-second event is open to the public, and they're looking forward to having people show up there, as well as if you could volunteer there as well. They're looking forward to getting support for that event. The Arts Gala, which is September sixteenth, we're still encouraging people to buy tickets. I happen to have some. I want to appreciate everyone on this council who bought a ticket and others who are willing to buy. It's a great fundraiser for the Arts Commission. And then the last day of the concerts in the park is next Wednesday, and that's the Coats. And they're also going to have the drawing for the Alaska Airlines, two tickets to anywhere they fly. I don't, I think the Legacy is still selling them. I'm not sure.
I have some.
You have some? Okay. Great.
They're five dollars each.
Yeah. Great, great support there for the Legacy Foundation. And then, Tony, I want to say, I didn't say anything yesterday because, you know, it's a big crowd. But you took the time, not only with weekly meetings, especially when I was appointed, to give me some history about the city. Because as a community member, not knowing anything really about what goes on in the city council or city staff, you know, I had the tendency to really be pretty critical prior to being on the council. Now, I'm very humbled being on this council. There's a lot going on in this community, there's a lot going on in the council, and there's a heck of a lot that goes on with city staff. So you really put a lot of that in perspective for me, and I appreciate it. I don't have your direct number, but maybe.
I do, Ash.
I know you do. You know, but I'm sure Michael will arise to the occasion and give as much information as you possibly can as well. So I want to thank you. You had a great, didn't have, you still have a great sense of humor. And as you leave to go off and do all your hiking and walking and with your lovely wife, I just want to say congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you.
So I don't have a committee report, but I'm going to kind of dovetail into what council member Kaplan and Bangs have said. As most of you know, that I'm pretty big into the watchdogs program at the elementary school. And if either you two have some contact information, I'd be glad to contact Pacific Middle School and get them going on it, because it is a program that helps introduce dads into the schools to give that positive male role model a place in the schools. And unfortunately, there's a lot of participation in primary education schools. The participation drops off almost ninety-five percent when it comes to middle schools, and there's a little bit more participation in high schools. And the kids in middle schools, because they're only there for two years, feel that they can't get their feet grounded, right? Because you're transient, you're just on the move. And there's a lot of problems that come with that, because they're finding themselves with the hormones that are going on, and they're trying to find a place, and they're not, they know they're not going to be there for very long. So any kind of support that we can give the middle schoolers is incredible.
I just want to add, the assistant principal actually mentioned the watchdogs and the desire to create an equivalent there at Pacific. And so any advice you can provide them probably would be helpful, because I think they're kind of, I think they're trying to feel their way on how to make that happen. So encourage you to contact.
I'll do that.
Yeah, I'll give you the contact info. I do want to add what was surprising to me, well, probably not so surprising. Principal Garcia said, "The impact is really when they're in grade school. If we can catch them in the second and third grade, then what goes on fourth grade and above really, it's never eliminated, right? Because you've got the outside influences. But at least maybe it can be tempered in providing them with the support that they need at that age." And, you know, because you've got young kids, so it's really important.
There's nothing better than seeing a gym packed full of two hundred students and dads playing basketball and soccer and what have you, and enjoying themselves. It's just an incredible feeling. So I will get in contact with Pacific and try to go from there. I want to support, I'm supportive, I want to thank the community for showing up for the girls lemonade stand. Thank you so much. I know that they stood up and said it, but as a father, I'm very proud of them and what they were able to accomplish. And they wouldn't have been able to accomplish it without the support of very, a large amount of the community, and most of them are sitting in this room today. And so thank you very much. I'm overwhelmed with joy. So thank you. I missed the concert in the park last night because of the fire along I-5, so I didn't get to see the Eagles cover band, which everybody loves the Eagles, right? And I had one other thing. And I had one other thing. I think that's about it. Forgive me for squirming so much up here. I stepped out of my truck or off of a piece of machinery today, and I'm in a great deal of pain right now. Ibuprofen is keeping it at its, at bay, but I'm squirming a lot, so I apologize. And that concludes my remarks.
Councilmember Musser.
I also attended both the Environment Committee and the Franchise Ad-Hoc Committee meetings tonight. I, we learned a new word in our Environment Committee meeting that I want to share with everyone, and you probably already know what it is. It's the evapotranspiring. And with you having your CECL certification, I'm sure you know what that is, so use that in the sentence this week. I also wanted to thank Tony for your guidance. I will miss, I'm hoping Michael will have that same look on his face when I launch into something like, where is this going? So, I thank you for humoring me. I'll miss our Monday morning coffee clutches, and I already miss running into you and Diane on the trail while I'm walking the dog. And so, I had made a joke today when I received Tony's last city manager's report that I'm expecting retired city manager reports about his hikes, and he says, "I'll send you one from Hawaii in October." So, I told him he could skip that one. So, I would worry about you getting under Diane's feet, but I've seen you two walk, and she's always three steps ahead of you, so I'm not worried about that. So, enjoy your soccer games, enjoy your walks, enjoy each other, and blessings upon you. I think you deserve it. If there's one thing I think everyone's talked about, your even manner, I, I think it's, you are always such an advocate for your employees, you're a champion for your department heads, and I, there's never been a time where I've served on this council that I ever had a second thought that you didn't have our back as policymakers. And so, I thank you for your professionalism, your humor, and just your kind heart. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And at the, almost to the end of the second quarter, the score is 0-0, Seahawks-Minnesota.
Well, as many of you know, on the 13th, we had our council retreat here. Some may have watched on, on TV, some, some attended. The significance of that, if you don't have, if you weren't there, haven't heard, is that the city's on its way to health. A lot of things have been changing, we, and it's through some very hard work and sacrifice by the staff. I like to refer to them as the team and the council. I like to refer to the progression as well, as we have been sick for a while. We are now on our way to health, and as soon as we can establish that health, we will gain strength. But all the indicators right now are, if we stay the course, continue to keep our shoulder to the flywheel, to take a line from good to great, we will get there. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for the time and the work to get this turned around. It, it would be hard to start naming names, because the sacrifice and, and the dedication has been so broad in this city. And it's not, it's even been with, with, it's the community together. It's, it's just amazing. And this is the, it's not the best budget I've ever seen, but it's the best I've ever seen with the city by far. So, and that's not to undermine how good it is, just, I'm looking back at Danielle right now. So, anyway. And Danielle, it was a long presentation. You did a great job. You've, you've worked throughout this whole year trying to help the council and even the, the city, both the people who work here and the people who live here, understand where the money is, where it's going, what its restrictions are. It's a huge help. This way, we can make good decisions together and keep going in the right way. On the 16th, I had an opportunity to attend the Destination Des Moines meeting, where they reviewed their, their year and how things went, looked forward, started looking at next year and things that they were going to do. I know that things don't always work out perfectly, but I've got to say that for, that's an amazing group of volunteers. And they get their friends, and they make these things happen. We have water land because of them. We have, you know, the, the kids carnival. And when I heard about the hoops they had to jump through just to get what they could get for the kids carnival this year, wow. So, these are people that are doing it out of the goodness of their hearts. And again, I'm humbled and very impressed. Then, yesterday, I had the pleasure of, I don't know if I call it emceeing, but attending and kicking off Tony's retirement. I'm going to say some of the same, same things I said there. Tony's not had an easy job. It's, he's, he comes to work every day between a rock and a hard place. And then he tries to figure out how to soften things and come to some, some solution. It's one of the more difficult jobs I've ever seen anybody have to do. I commend you for your solid calm. I think we have all referenced that in one way or another. And at times when we are at the fringe of being able to keep our calm, you have always been there to help us. I appreciate that. Always appreciated your sense of humor. In difficult situations, if you can't find the irony and learn to laugh at it, it's just going to make you cry. So, I appreciate that. There, you've always been loyal to the city, Tony, and to the staff. There's never a question of that. And you've always been committed to finding the best solutions for this city, even when those solutions weren't evident. And we didn't know where the solution was going to come from. But I'm reluctant to use the word scrappy. Because, yeah, sometimes we have to be scrappy and find that solution, but that's, scrappy implies that there's no education, there's no thought, there's no, it's just, we kind of worked through this one, and here it is. That was never the case. And then I'm going to shift the attention away from you for a second, and I'm going to thank Diane. You paid a really high price to allow this man to serve this community for 20 years. And boy, don't we know it. So, it's, it would be inappropriate to thank Tony without thanking you. And with that, I'd like to bring up our assistant city manager, hopefully soon-to-be city manager, Michael Mathias.
Mayor, council, Tony, community staff, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about Tony. And, you know, I've only had the opportunity to work with you for two years. And I want to approach this slightly differently. I think everyone has really paid you accolades that are well-deserved. But from my perspective, the thing to really notice and appreciate and will miss is what a decent person you are. That's just been evident in everything I've ever seen you do. I've seen you have compassion for your employees who have families and have to deal with that. I think that you allowed me to, you know, to come with a different perspective and to pursue that perspective, hopefully in the betterment of the city. And I appreciated your openness to that. And I think just, you know, I appreciate always a chance to talk with you about different experiences that we've had in our careers and just kind of share. But the other thing that shouldn't be lost, and maybe this is appropriate for the last thing to say, is that leadership and inspiration are, they're very sort of subtle qualities. And I think inspiration is about when people choose to want to do their best. And I think you brought that out. Thank you. Yeah. With that, bring it out.
Diane, would you like to be a part of this?
What's Carmen Minoneeter?
We would like to recognize your service, Tony, with this. I'll have to bring it back down. I'll hold it back up so people can see it, but I can't read it if I don't hold it down. This small token of appreciation that says, "Tony Pioszke, in recognition of dedicated, dedicated service as city manager to the city of Des Moines, August 19, 1996 to August 19, 2016." Thank you. But we're not done. I get the pleasure of, I believe this is the first one, is it not?
The first 20-year pin.
First 20-year pin?
I don't know. I think a few employees have got one.
Well, I think it's the first 20-year pin on the city manager.
I think it is.
It's a great pleasure to, many of you have seen the lapel pins that we have with the shield on them. This is one that signifies 20 years of service. It's a great pleasure I get to pin this on you. Look, I'll pin it.
Well, I have to start with thank you. I truly want to say thank you. It is very humbling to have all of you here. Vic, with being the exception, but I understand San Antonio is a lot more fun than a council meeting, but that's okay. Thank you for all being here to help celebrate my 20 years. And this may be cliche, but I honestly believe it. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to work side by side with all of you, council, staff, community. I appreciate your support and patience as we transact of the city's business. To all of the staff, thank you very much for your hard work and dedication and your enthusiasm for public service and your willingness to tell me what I needed to know rather than what I wanted to know. There was a time many years ago when I was in Phoenix, I had an employee who worked for me, who I would walk in his office, he'd walk in mine, and we would talk about an issue, and I couldn't get him to tell me what he thought we should do. So, finally, out of frustration, I'd say, "Well, what do you think about this?" He goes, "Oh, that's great." And I'd say, "Well, what about that?" He goes, "Oh, well, we can do that if you want to, too." And it just drove me crazy until I'd shut the door and I'd almost have to shake him by the shoulders and say, "Will you tell me what you really think?" And then he'd tell me what he really thought, and that really helped frame the decisions that we made. So, staff, thank you for being honest with me, and like I said, sometimes telling me things that I really didn't want to hear. And then to everyone from other agencies, organizations, all of our residents, our business owners, thank you for your collaborative efforts to make Des Moines a great place to live and have a business. Mayor mentioned Destination Des Moines. That organization has gone through fits and starts over the last 10 years. But it always had this really cool purpose, and it was, it is so gratifying to see it starting to fulfill that purpose and do it in a way that is, starting to become bigger and bigger. And one of the things I've always told the presidents of those organizations is you've got to find your fundraising thing first. From there, everything else will flow. And I think they're finally starting to get their groove on that with some of the, some of the fundraising activities that we're doing. So, that's been very gratifying to see. I could talk about accomplishments and things that we've done, but, you know, quite frankly, what I'd rather just say is, this has been a very collaborative journey for me, and it, that's my style. That's the way I like to do things. I like to bring people together and talk about what we can do, what we can't do, and what the issues are and what the options are. And I was talking to Tony Hettler yesterday. He's the president of Destination Des Moines, and he thanked me for doing what I thought was an extraordinarily simple thing. Now, if you remember, some of our groups sometimes were kind of butting heads a little bit, and the things weren't going really smoothly. And quite frankly, they kept coming to me saying, "Well, tell them to do this," or, "Don't let them do that." And I finally had enough, and I said, "We're all going to get together in a room, and we're going to talk about it." So, in, it was March or April of last year, brought the groups in, and we started talking about what everyone was doing and how that was working. And last summer kind of smoothed out a little bit. And have you noticed this summer? The groups are working well together, they're complementing each other, they're not fighting for one thing or another. It's because we got together and we talked about it. It was a pretty simple thing to do, but Tony thought it was a fantastic thing to do. So, I'm glad I could play a little part in that. I do want to thank my wife again. Thank you very much. I think Matt hit it on the head. And I was commenting to someone, I think it was you folks, that, you know, very rarely would I have a week where I wouldn't have at least one evening meeting, and sometimes two or three, and then something on Saturday. And you've been always so supportive of that and understanding of that. And I can't tell you how much it meant to me, and I think this whole community that you understood and let me go do what I needed to do. So, thank you, sweetheart. I love you very much. Thank you.
Well, now we will transition to what looks to be your final admin report.
We will start with our monthly financial report from Danielle.
Good evening, Madison Finance Director. And tonight, we're looking at the July financial statements. So, basically, things are on track. They're, the revenues are looking good. We're at 60%, so if we did it evenly here, July is the seventh month out of 12, and that would say that we would be expecting about 58% of our revenues. And since the tax revenues, which come in in April and October, we're kind of halfway through those, the 60% is, is really spot-on. So, what this also shows is that our budgeting is realistic. We're not too high, we're not too low. We're, we're being very upfront and forthright in our budgeting process. So, as far as the expenditures go, those are pretty much as expected. Some of these are spending a little bit higher due to some one-time events like employee cashouts on retirements. Similarly, like the city manager's office, it's a little bit behind the 58%, and that's because of vacancies. So, again, is, personnel is one of our largest costs by type by far, so when personnel changes, then that's really what's going to be affecting these kinds of percentages. Down here, I don't want to minimize the effect here, so I'd like to point out, this number right here is 520,000. You can see that's as compared to 300,000 of a loss that we were last year. So, this is, again, is, is pretty exciting news. This is our total revenues, let us our total expenditures through the end of July. So, this money is really our, our sustainable money. This is our ongoing revenues and our ongoing expenses. So, in addition to this happy outlook, we also get to look at things like this, which is more good news. So, these are basically the things that we term to be one-time in nature. Basically, these are the things that are kind of, if you look at a trend line, we get dollars over and above that trend line. So, we define those as money that's coming from development projects with valuations in excess of $15 million. And so, we have, that's what the 159 is for related to that development money, and then the permits and plan review money that's also related to those larger projects. The property tax one-time money, that's for us is a reminder to keep that part of our tax levy is really based on the library, not using all of their legal levy capacity. And so, at any time, And so at any time, well, not at any time, but under certain circumstances, the library can go ahead, and they have first claim on this money. So we treat it as one-time money so that we don't build it into our baseline, have it go away, and then be caught short. Okay, this is our revenues by month. Again, these are, the future months are just a copy of last year. You can see that we had some big spikes. But really, it's, there's not a lot of change between this month last year and this month this year. If you look at our little creepy crawly, I kind of changed this up a little bit. I took off the future years, or, excuse me, the future months for the rest of the year so that we can kind of focus a little bit more on the changes that occurred so far this year. And again, there's several good news. This is last year. This is this year. And this is our expenditure, and these are our revenues. So we had quite that gap last year. Again, we started out kind of the same, but we've been able to close that gap this year. And we've been able to hold the higher revenues for a month longer than we were able to last year. And so here we are. June is a little bit better, and again, July is a little bit better than last year. So again, cumulative year to date, we are pretty much as we have predicted, and we have predicted good news. Here are some of our major tax sources for the month. And again, the black line is kind of where we are for this year. And again, we're at 51 percent, 57 percent. So these are consistent. They're on track. The BNO here is a little bit odd. I'm predicting that basically this is going to rebound. I think it's a timing issue, and that we're going to see that money higher coming this next month. So I don't think that's showing a reduction in BNO taxes. I think it's just a timing difference from last year. French fries fees are coming in steadily. The utility taxes are coming in pretty much on target. And then here's our real estate excise tax. These are the ones that we use for capital projects. And this year, it looks a lot more steady. It's not peaking and valley, bouncing around quite as much as it has in prior years. And this one, we do try to predict a little more conservatively, which means we're underestimating the revenues just because we've got projects and we don't want to overcommit on contracts. So we tend to take this one a little bit lower. And so it is at 72 percent already. And so the reality is, again, more good news than we have designed into our budget process. These are the special revenue funds, monthly report. And not a lot of news there. We're still working on the redondo side of things. I think there's a bill that came in later here, so this continues to be a concern. Hopefully, when the boardwalk gets open here shortly, that we'll get some more parking revenue in and more people down there walking, and that hopefully will help the situation a little bit. So these are the rest of the other special revenue fees. The automated speed enforcement is kind of on hold right now because it is the summer break. So there's, the ticket citation revenue kind of stays on hold until school starts. So our debt service revenue, again, not a lot of activity. That usually happens mostly in December, but we are just continuing to set aside the resources on a monthly basis so when that debt payment comes due, we have the funds available to make those payments. So here's a look at the Marina Fund for July. And as we've talked, the fuel prices are lower, therefore our costs are lower, our sales are lower. But even so, the number of gallons that we're selling is slightly less than it was last year. Changes in the fishing season is not helping that sales, but hopefully the continued good weather in the fall maybe will make up some of that. But we had good weather late into the fall last year as well. So we kind of set a pretty high bar last year that we're trying to meet again. But the revenues, again, the cash reserves look good. The revenues are solid. And even with those changes, our year-to-date numbers are better than what they were in the prior year. And then we have the SWIM, the Surface Water Management Fund, and that's just progressing basically according to plan. Its reserves look good. And then finally, we have our internal service funds, and we're funding those. Again, we're on a kind of a three-to-five-year recovery plan for the internal service funds, so we're putting aside what we expect that we should be putting aside on an annual basis, plus a little bit more to build and rebuild those fund balances. In particular, the self-insurance fund, as you can see, that was negative at this time last year. It's been negative most of the year, and we're just now starting to get, start accumulating some cash because that's the big bill that we have to pay in January each year. And then our unemployment fund continues to grow, and that concludes my report.
Any questions? Jeremy? Sorry, Councilmember Nettie?
Thank you. We've been going through this, this way for the last seven months, and now that we're getting closer to budget season, I would like to, if the council's okay with it, I would like, we have expenditures broken out: city council, municipal court, city manager, finance, legal, police, planning, public works, parks and rec, and senior services. I'd like to see, instead of the revenues being all lumped together as one, I'd like to see a year-to-date, even if it's quarterly or twice a year, but it's hard to make decisions on just seeing a lump sum of what our revenues are and then a breakout of what everybody else is spending. I think that's kind of unfair moving forward. So just my thoughts.
Trying to understand what that would look like.
Well, I mean, it'd look like this right here. Expenditures with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Are you suggesting that you would like to see these revenues broken down into the same categories as the expenditure category?
Absolutely. Okay. I see what you're doing.
So right now, in the financial system and somewhat historically, this is kind of a standard way government reports. And so it, we don't actually have the revenues assigned to those council or to these operating divisions. So kind of the first step towards that is what we did in the budget retreat, and we started matching some of those resources up. So our accounting system currently isn't designed to do that, and so it's a very manual situation. But I will, but like you said, if the request is on a quarterly basis, and as you said, trying to get it more towards the budget thing, we'll take a look at that and do that. And then probably moving forward, what we would need to do is some work on our system so that we would assign those on a permanent basis so we could just run reports, and then it would be very easy to do on a monthly basis.
So is our new system that we're implementing in finance not able to do that?
A new system would do that. Converting the chart of accounts that we have right now could do that. But it's just right now, they're not captured that way, but we can do it through a manual process. And so the challenge would be to automate that process going forward.
I would like to, for me, I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, but we're going to be asked to make some decisions come budget time, and I would like to see some breakdowns of year-to-date on what the departments are bringing in.
We'll match them up, and we'll get some comparative numbers for you as well so that if you're talking on the budget, then probably a three-year comparison and a little bit of trending might also give a good perspective.
And where we are this year.
This is, yeah, I think this is the expectation thing by presenting the budget information the way that it was presented.
You like it, huh?
We want to see the detail that goes with that, and so when we get the financial reports, this is fine, but I think we're going to want to see on a programmatic level how that matches up as well. And then, as I requested prior to council meeting, we talked about having park and rec revenues also, you know, we've got the taxes here, but we don't see the park and rec revenues broken out either by month.
Right.
Right. They're buried in this chart.
And compared to prior years. So that, again, that would be helpful to have as well. So, thanks.
Okay. We'll work on that.
Okay.
Danielle, a couple, a few months ago, you were walking me through some of this, and we were actually at your office, and you're pulling up all kinds of stuff on your screen. And I was asking you about the debt service funds. And I remember you saying there was one or two loans that we are really close to paying off. Do you happen to remember what those are? I thought there was like one or two of them that are within a year, maybe a year and a half that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Were going to get out of debt on a couple of these loans. I just don't remember what they were. Do you happen to remember what they?
For the city hall, for the city hall expansion and a refinancing of a prior loan. So that was one of them, and I believe that pays off in 2018, if I remember right. So...
And the Marina?
The other one goes out, the Marina ones, they go out longer. So I think we have one in 2021 and 2028, 2024.
We did a refi on that.
It's a while yet before those pay off. But you're right, we do have one that's coming up soon. That debt service is being paid and funded out of our real estate excise tax money, which is kind of capital money. And so it's not coming from the general fund. So when that gets paid off, that doesn't help our general fund picture, but what it does do is stop paying for capital that we've done in the past, and it allows us a source to start paying for capital projects that we want to do in the future.
Great.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Well, next, just very briefly, council had asked me to put together a transition plan or a handoff plan. So it became more than just a plan. It became a notebook. So I'll be handing this to Michael for some light bedtime reading. But I've gone through and I've put together, from my perspective, what I see is a status report on all of the council's strategic objectives, the process things that you've wanted to do, all of the committee work plans, where you're at with all those items. And, you know, most of the stuff I think Michael knows, but, you know, we do spread ourselves thin a little bit, so there are some committee meetings he goes to that I don't and vice versa. For each of the departments, this may be a little bit redundant, but I've given him information with this shows org charts. I think the really cool part, and this is stuff that Danielle put together for me, is showing the budgets and the personnel levels for each of the departments going back to 2011. So he can see, and you can see, the growth or actually the diminishment of some of the departments over the years. I asked each department director to give me a summary of where they're at with a variety of issues, so I got that, and that's attached in here for each department as well. We are involved in a few lawsuits, and we have a few claims are out there. So Tim gave me a memo summarizing where we're at with some of those. In addition, I've attached some of the reports we get from WCIA that shows the status of all the claims that have been filed against the city for the last several years so Michael can see what those look like. Gave him some information regarding a variety of outside organizations that we belong to, like WCIA, AWC, SCORE. And, you know, honestly, some of it was just going to their websites and downloading mission statements and some of the budgetary information, but I think what's really valuable for him in here is I've got contact information, who the president of the organizations are, what their phone numbers are, what their email addresses are, if I could find them. So hopefully, he'll, if he needs to know who I call at SCORE on x issue, he's got information on that. And then I just went through other governmental entities, starting with our congressional district nine and Adam Smith and his staff, and all the way through down to including our sewer, water and sewer districts and South King Fire and Rescue with as much contact information as I could find on those from my super-secret rolodex and other things. And then a little bit of information on community organizations, contact information for those, all of the various city committees, as best I could, finding the people who are on them, what their missions are, things like that. And then I think hopefully something he'll find very useful is community contacts, people over the years who I've worked with in a variety of issues. And some of them I only have phone numbers. Some of them have phone numbers and email addresses, and with a real, just quick little comment about who they are and what it is that he needs to know about them. And then professional contacts, and that one was really easy because once a month, when the city manager's monthly meeting is being held, we get an agenda and then a spreadsheet with all the contact numbers on there. So this one is going to be really valuable for you because all of these are direct to people's desks. So at the end of the meeting, I'll be putting this on your chair, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have. Next, I'd like to ask Joe to come up, and he's got a couple of issues I'd like him to comment on. Pokemon Go phenomenon, what he's learned about it, and what are some of the issues going on with it. And yes, one of the issues that we'll talk about is can we opt out of it? And then after he talks about that, answers any of your questions, I'll just give you a quick status report on pay parking. Joe?
Thank you, mayor and council members. We've been talking about this at the staff level in staff meetings for the last, I think it's been about a month since this really exploded. Obviously, we've all seen about it, some of the news reports about this in other areas, other cities around our area. What we've experienced is large crowds in the Marina and the beach park. We haven't really seen an increase in graffiti, vandalism, or property damage. Trash, especially in the beach park, was a problem at first, but working with our, the ecology, we've kind of got a handle on that, but it's still an issue out in the parking lots, and we've seen, especially in the south end, well, south end, north end. But we are having problems that are common to large crowds. We've got the open use of alcohol. We see that. We see some people smoking pot. Obviously, noise, which is bothersome to our neighbors, and then obviously, there's always somebody with, pushing the boundaries with some inappropriate behavior. One of the problems we're also experiencing is that we do have our 10 o'clock, our 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. vehicle traffic curfew, and our officers have been pretty good about sweeping those, sweeping the lots and getting those people to leave, but they've been going to the Anthony's lots, and so kind of sort of setting up there. They park in Anthony's and then, and keep playing the game throughout the night. So we've basically kind of relocated the problem to the south end. We were able to, this is a nationwide problem. We were able to take part in a webinar yesterday morning with the National Recreation and Parks Association, and it talked about the, how the game works and how other, how other cities and organizations are dealing with it around the country. The, the scale of it is amazingly large. Pokemon Go is, and just to give you some context, it's, this game is the first of what is broadly classed as augmented reality on mobile applications. And the prog, the projections for this, the growth of this particular type of game is staggering, really. So, and when you think about the, when you actually look at the game, it's really a pretty basic GPS-based game. But one of the commenters on the webinar basically said, "If you all remember Pac-Man, well, Pokemon Go is Pac-Man compared to what we will be in a very short time," you know? So it's really a, it's, this is, the message is, this is the beginning, not, certainly not the end. So just briefly how it works, I don't know. Has anybody played, anybody played the game? So, all right. Good for you. Yeah, good for you. Well, the reason why we're so impacted is these dots are what they call Poké stops. And we have 28 of them in the downtown. You can see they're in the downtown and beach park and in the Marina.
This is Jim's, this is Joe's house.
Yeah.[1797.33][1797.33](LAUGHING). These... These, and this is, these are locations, GPS locations, where you go to with your smartphone, and you've downloaded the application on your smartphone. You go to these locations, and you can download, and I may get this wrong, because I'm very new to this, but this is where you go to get the, the information and the things you need to play the game. The game is actually played, like a lot of the games that I've watched my grandkids play, it's usually some imaginary creature beating up another imaginary creature. And that is accomplished at what they call Poké gyms, gym as in gymnasium. And there's one at the south Marina Park, there's one at the end of the beach, at the end of our fishing pier, and then there's one up near the, near the bridge on the, on the Des Moines Creek Trail.
The power towers.
Yeah. All right. So that's what, that's what you see. You see large crowds of young people.
Yep.
Young people. Well. People that are younger than me, wandering around, staring at their, their phones and their, 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 what they're really looking for is, they want to capture the Pokemon creatures that pop up randomly around this area. And they don't. So that's when you see on the news, a large crowd of people taking off and running over to this, knocking down the fence and running through the park. That's because somebody screamed at one of the really rare Pokemons just popped up at some other place. So the, there's, there's many layers to the game, I won't go into that now. But the, what we really learned from this, at least this level, is that this is how other, other cities and other agencies are communicating with the people playing the game. So you know where they have to go, so if you have some signage, that's where you want your signage. Now, the other thing is, they've all got the smartphone in their hand, so if you have a message you want to get to them, you need to have a Facebook page, or someplace they can access that information as fast as, you know, instantly. So, so the, like I said, this is the end, not the beginning. We're a large public facility, and lots and lots of people are using the public facility to play this game. So I don't, we, the, the choice for the city is, do we opt out of this game? Because you can do that, as Tony mentioned, we can go, go to their website, and we can actually opt out as a city, we can opt out of this game. Private property owners obviously would have to go and opt out on their own. Or do we want to try to manage this somehow and see if there's, if there's some way?
And one other question I ask, follow-up on Joe, is can we opt out just for certain times of the day?
We are, we sent an email today to, to the, to the website to see if that is a possibility. I'm, I'm not hopeful, because when you look at the scale of that, this is an international thing. So, so I think you're either in or out, but we will take a look at that and see if it's can be time-zoned.
So, Joe, do these Poké stops change? Do they stay stat? I mean.
They do change, although one of the recommendations from the webinar was to review your map. And we, basically, what we did was we hired, we hired one of the junior staffers at Camp Chaos to go around, make our map for us.
One of the young ones?
Yeah. Yeah, they had it done in about 45 minutes, you know?
So you can actually go in and?
Well, yeah, the idea is, is, for one, like the, the Poké gym near the bridge, we've had a lot of problems with, on the Des Moines Creek Trail anyway. So I think one of our recommendations would be to go on the website and say, hey, we don't want that Poké gym there, we want it someplace else. Especially, we, you know, just to put the traffic on the trail is a little problematic, I would think. So, but the other opportunity is, we've got, did you have this, have this sign? Oh, yeah, it's, it's on the site, but, but we could show, in your packet, there's a sign there that we have an opportunity for signage, so we can actually get out our A boards and go around to the, to sort of the strategic spots, and we can put out some signage that encourages people to quit playing at 10 o'clock, because I think that's, 90% of the problem is we just get people there way too late at night, and they start to bother the neighbors. The other thing that we would recommend if, and I did talk to Anthony's today, is essentially coming up with a way to barricade their parking lots off at night. You notice how they do that for fireworks and, and farmers market days? We essentially do the same thing, but just do it every night for a while. And so when we sweep the lots, we actually move the, move the cars on, they don't just go to Anthony's.
But one more, Joe. I see staff recommendations, is there any way for us to make some of this $120 billion?
Yeah, I, I, the, it's a, and I guess if you want to look at it in a positive way, it's an activity-based game. So there's certain elements of the game that actually, you actually have to walk to accomplish. So they've, some, some recreation parks and parks departments around the country are already starting to have Pokemon events, like you have a Pokemon 5K, you have a Pokemon 10K, because they actually play the game while they're doing this event. And, and then they, they advertise a Pokemon, for instance, let's say you're, it's a Halloween, it's, so it's a Pokemon, you open up your parks until midnight and just do the Pokemon, you know, have a Pokemon Halloween party or something like that. So, so I, it's, it was, I guess, looking at the good side of it or the best intentions is that it was, it was developed as an activity-based game, and for the gaming community to use, and I suppose they've succeeded in getting kids off the couch and down to the Marina. So.
So I take it that Pokemon Inc. is a business, and they're making money on this game?
Derek?
It's not Nintendo, it's Nantastic, that was developed by Nantastic and Google. Nintendo's only a third person in this, and they're only a stakeholder because they own Pokemon. They're not making any money off of this whatsoever, they're a shareholder. So they don't make any money. It's Nantastic and Google that have developed this game.
Interesting. So. So I just didn't know what the stakeholders, they're just doing this for the fun of it?
I sort of doubt that. I think when you start talking about 100 million downloads, and then there's a, there's a...
Yeah, is there advertising rights? The point I'm getting at is, if there's money being made, is this something that they should be having a business license, and other cities tried to do that?
Boy, I don't know. That's...
Just like any other game, if you run out of lives, you have to pay five bucks for more lives or more time or anything like that. And so instead of waiting to recoup or regenerate or whatever, people are paying $5 every few minutes. And with millions and millions and millions of people playing this game, it spans three generations, right? You've got the four-year-olds that are playing it, you've got the 20-year-olds that are playing it, and you've got the 45-year-olds that are playing it. Three generations of people are playing this game. And that's why the beach park is so packed right now, and Anthony's is empty, the market is doing bad because of it. It, it is not helping at all, except for congestion in the beach park and taxing our police force that's already taxed, taxing our Marina staff that is already taxed to the gill, empty and trash, and, and getting people out of there. So I...
The only other thing I was going to add is, it's also monetized from the standpoint that there are businesses that want people coming in and, and have paid the company for the right to post, to have a...
They become a Poké stop.
Mm-hmm. So even if, even if there was a way, you know, I think one of the challenges from a standpoint of trying to, business licensing, yeah, the challenge with that is, it's probably falls under the same as...
Freedom of speech?
No. Internet connectivity and that kind of thing. We have no, we have no regulatory authority over it, either because of state preemption or federal preemption. So, you know, but...
I, I agree with, I agree with what Councilmember Netting has said, though I'm concerned about what the impacts are as well in terms of resources.
And it's, it could be borderline considered a public business?
Excuse me, Councilmember Aings is next.
I just wanted to give some credit to Melissa. Can we, can we just put in quick charging stations for five bucks a charge?
That was one of the fundraising things, they would, some of the departments that, or some of the locations would, would set up, they would sell water, they'd bring in food trucks, and they would sell the charging sticks. So, yeah, it's, like I said, this is not the end, this is just the beginning, and it's, it's going to be around for a long time.
Councilmember Netting?
I was hoping that it would just fade away, but it didn't do that.
And, and, I'm sorry, I'm a little, the, the whole thing's frustrating to me, and I'll share a story really quick, and I've shared it with a couple of people. On a Saturday afternoon, the wife and I went to dinner, and then went to dessert at Anthony's, and the parking lot was absolutely packed, the Marina was packed, almost nowhere to park, find a place to park. We walked into Anthony's on a Saturday afternoon, it was gorgeous, mild, should have been waiting 45 minutes for a seat, walked upstairs, sat down, there was only two other couples on the patio, on a beautiful afternoon, watching the sunset. So I've got to believe that Anthony's is suffering from this as well. And when we sit up here and talk about how the economic development of this town and how we support, support our businesses, I am more in support of our businesses that have been here and supported us for a long time than, I would like to go down the road and try to figure out how to make this work. But if you would like, I have done some research myself, I have the website right here to remove the beach park or whatever it is that we choose to remove from the Poké stops. And, I mean, I'm, the market has seen a decrease in revenues, there are people saying that are not going to the Wednesday night market or to support anything on the Wednesday night or the Saturday afternoon market. And, and those guys have created a place and, and a market that went from barely getting 10 people in a small alcove to the grandeur that it is today, and a destination. And as far as I'm concerned, we can't be a destination for Pokemon, we have to be a destination for what it is that we've set our roots in. So that, that is my stance on it. And I'm glad that I have this opportunity publicly to say that.
Councilmember Wester?
Did you find out in your webinar, your, your webinar, how the stops got there? I mean, I know that...
It's a...
It's so saturated down there. And I know the city of Bellevue is fighting this, if you Google search Bellevue Pokemon Go, and it's like, it looks like the mall at Washington DC, it's just packed with these kids and their infrastructure, you know, the irrigation's getting ruined, the fountains aren't working, the, there should be, just not because anyone's damaging anything, but there's just sheer numbers of people.
You know, I don't know the exact answer to that, I can surmise that it's a, it's a GPS-based application. So I would imagine that the, what the, what the, what the program is looking for, when they set this up, they're looking for large open spaces, and they assign these spots to GPS locations on that map.
Because it's so specific, like, the, I mean, you look at the, one of the stops, for example, is the artwork on the outside of City Hall. And it's, shows the picture of the art and the description of it. And if you go through the tour of our sculpture on the Art Commission, all the sculptures are Poké stops. So it made me wonder if there was like some crowdsourcing thing, or if they're just going through people's, because it's so specific.
It's, and basically probably Google Earth, where they just zoom in on it and they tag them, you know? But yes, it would just, I mean, this is international, so how in, I can't imagine that there are people doing that, but maybe that's the way it's set up, I'm not sure.
And churches are, if you walk down 8th Avenue, there's a stop at every single church as you're heading north. Cemeteries, water towers, I mean, so they've taken large structures and just put stops there without anybody's permission.
Maybe they have a program that just can, uses Google Earth, and they recognize big open spaces, and they just start dropping spots in there. I'm, I'm not sure.
So I have a question about the site that you mentioned, Councilmember Netting. Excuse me. Okay, does it have to be the entire city? Does it have to be, you know, how much control do you have over what you take off?
From what I've seen, from what I've seen, you have some control, you can't just delete your entire city, but you can delete certain places that have become a nuisance, in essence, that has caused a hardship, and you have to be able to prove that kind of thing, that it's, it's taxing your police force, it's already having problems, it's, the Marina staff is putting way too much time into it than they need to be. The citizens are writing letters, and it's not just one citizen or two citizens, it's hundreds of citizens getting behind it, saying that this, this whole congregation of, and businesses behind it as well. So you, you need to show some proof. But what I'd like to understand is, I'm concerned about the whack-a-mole principle. So we take the Marina off in Des Moines, you know, downtown here, and all of a sudden, Redondo gets plagued with the density that is no longer in the Des Moines Marina. I, 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 we need to understand what the ramifications are, and, and I, I'm not trying to delay what the, anything, I'm just saying that, how, how, where can we go to understand this? It doesn't look like there's anybody you can talk to, it looks like you just get to watch webinars.
I think the big problem is, is that the Marina is such a big area.
Yeah.
I mean, when you're walking down and there's three churches, you know, boom, 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 nobody's going to park their car, hundreds of people aren't going to park their car to hit three churches on 8th Avenue. You know, they're, they're not going to park their car for one stop or anything like that, they're going to probably wreck into somebody playing it while they're driving. But the fact of the matter is, is the Marina is so big with so much of this right here, and that by the time you get from Anthony's to the beach park, everything's regenerated so you can walk back and do it all again, and keep collecting stuff on the way. So it takes, from what I understand, it takes 30 to 45 minutes for the first stop that you do to regenerate itself so you can go back and hit it again. And so that's why they're down there all day. They park, they go from one end, they chase everything, they get up to the beach park, they do that, and they go back and do it all again.
Where do they get?
I, I'm sorry, I've never been a big video game player, so I have no idea.
Critters.
So I guess what we need, Councilmember Back, did you want to say something?
I want to ask Tim, is there any legal fight, where we call this a public nuisance because of the drain it's putting on our staff and resource?
I think we need some more specific information, but from what I've heard, probably not a public nuisance. It just seems like it's, it's a busy time at the Marina, and it's being overused potentially, but I don't think it would be considered a nuisance under the law.
I think the lawsuit's going to come when a mother watching her phone and not her two-year-old that's swimming in the incoming surf gets carried out and dies in our beach park or our waterfront. And I've, I've witnessed it, and I'm sure everybody in this room that's been down there has witnessed it as well. So that's where the lawsuits are going to come from.
My, my thinking is, it sounds like we as a team need to come up with, it almost sounds like a full opt-in or full opt-out. Because, again, I, I don't know how the balloon will stretch if you take one thing out. I, I am very concerned that it would just move the density to someplace else, and it could be within the city. We're long and narrow, we, we have, we don't have a lot of spaces like the Marina, but, you know, you have Landmark on the sound, you have the Redondo beachfront, you have a number, you've got Saltwater Park, you know? So I'm saying, I, I think we need to think about that. But, you know, where does the council want to, I personally think we ought to yield to staff recommendation and say, you know, I, I agree with all the points that have been made here, and if, you know, if you guys think we ought to, we ought to opt out, then that's what we ought to do. But that's my opinion.
Well...
I see, I did put a post on a community page a couple of weeks ago, and it was an overwhelming number of people saying, it's hurting our park. I mean, I think of everyone who posted, there were maybe three people who said, just, you know, let them live, they're just kids having fun. But I would say dozens of people said, it's time to, they wouldn't, their feelings wouldn't be hurt. And it's going to coincide, hopefully, with kids going back to school anyway, and it will just...
Well, that's a council decision. You know, we're public employees, we manage a public facility, when the public shows up, our first inclination is to try to manage them. So, so if, but if it's the decision of the council to opt out, that's, like Councilmember Netting said, that's very easy to do, we can do that tomorrow.
I'm going to suggest a couple of things. One, if we could delve a little bit...
One, if we could delve a little bit deeper into the opt-out, and are there various layers of that, I think that would be helpful. And then, if we could also figure out where there might be a, a conglomeration of these stops and gyms and other parts of the city. So, as the mayor said, uh, would we be playing whack-a-mole with this? If we were to shut it down here, would the problem move someplace else? So, that way, council at least has an understanding and, uh, and some data and information to make a decision on as to whether or not we opt-out, and do they have different levels of opting out. So, I, I like your, your very, your very final recommendation, follow up with council in two weeks. I really like that recommendation.
Wow.
Two weeks after school is in session, and maybe-
No, that's not the two weeks I'm referring to.
Oh, okay.
You know, even after school's in session, I worry.
Yeah.
Because, you know, here we've had conversation earlier about greeting the kids on the first day of school. Really?
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna be looking at their phone, or they may be someplace else, or, or leaving early. That's, I mean, this, the impact of this thing is, is significant. I just wanna make sure we do it right. Uh, I'm not sure I wanna wait two weeks.
No, I think we should get 'em moving.
You know-
I make a, I make a motion to direct staff to investigate removing the Poki stops from the Des Moines Marina.
Second.
Discussion? Wait a second, you just said the marina.
Correct. I think, I, I don't think that we have the authority to, to mandate that a private business who may, I mean, you can go on Yelp and tell them you have a Poki stop.
Yeah.
But I think from all public parks, specifically for the sake of getting, because it seems to be impacting the marina more than our other, so the marina and the beach park. I mean, Jeremy's right, I just pulled up a thing, in all other places in Seattle, there's maybe one or two per park. Water Tower, we have one up on the North Hill, um, but this is such a concentration, and this is unlike any of the other parks in King County, that I think we're able to say that it's an inequitable burden on our city, and that we should remove it from the waterfront.
Just a clarification, we really, we don't need to investigate. There's a very clear-cut way to opt-out. Uh, I, I would imagine you, the wording would be, uh, "all public property," which would probably include right-of-way, and just say, "Take it off, you're out of the game."
So, that would include the Redondo?
You could just say, "Any public property or right-of-way in the city of Des Moines, just take it out of the game."
I would be more in favor of that.
I'm fine with that. Friendly amendment accepted.
But I still say that, you know, investigate looking at it out and, and show you your options. If, if it is more than just yes or no, I think council needs to know what kind of, uh, other variations on that might be available, that you might wanna have some of it stay. But, if it comes back, it's just either in or out, then.
Well, um, my concern is, we're not back in session until September eighth. If you turn it off, can you turn it back on if you want to?
Uh, I didn't ask that. Uh, we didn't talk about that.
Well-
Well, let's implement paid parking first, and then turn it back on.
Well-
Very specific about how-
Must be staff has made that comment, if we didn't have implemented this a few months ago.
I can't take comments from the public at this time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it, they were, the, in the webinar, it was very specific that, "Go to this website, opt-out." That's, it was not-
Direct staff do that.
Well, the council knows what information we have right now. Um, the motion on the table is to opt-out of all public places within the city, the city of Des Moines, Washington. Any discussion?
Was that the motion? I thought she said, Melissa Strickly said the marina.
I amend, I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye. So, that motion was to just completely opt-out?
Yes.
Yep. Appreciate your guidance, but yes.
Sorry about you.
Just a-
Uh-oh.
Quick update on paid parking? Is that what you want?
Oh, paid, yeah.
Uh, paid parking, just very quickly, uh, you heard a comment earlier about the public meetings, uh, the projects in SEPA Shoreline now, uh, we had our second public meeting last night, that's our third Wednesday meeting. We plan on continuing those meetings just every month until, or every third Wednesday until we, the project's completed. Uh, we're also putting up a project website, which should be up by tomorrow, then we'll put our, the plans, meeting schedules, meeting comments, frequently asked questions, that's the type of thing will be on that webpage. It'll be accessible through the marina website. Uh, next step is, uh, request for proposals. I'm, I'm hoping to get that circulating through the staff work group next week. We've tried to pull together and find out what kind of equipment we need, and then we also, we're also working on the final shop drawings for all the concrete work, so we can finish up those estimates.
Thank you.
Only, the only question I have is, so, when's the guesstimated, uh, implementation date?
I don't have an estimate yet, so, uh, that's gonna be largely dependent on permitting, too, so. Hopefully, we have everything ready to go by the time we get out of the permitting phase.
Quick, um, quickly, um, I believe Mr. Lynn Scott said there was a meeting coming up in September.
Yes.
Uh, would you, would you make sure that the council all gets an invitation to that meeting, so if any of us can go, we can go, so we can see where the community discussion is?
Okay, yeah, we're trying to, we've, we've had two meetings, very good attendance from the marina district, you know, the, kinda sort of the usual suspects. We're really trying to figure out how to get out to the broader community, and so we're gonna, the next one, we're gonna try, uh, I'm gonna try to do that at the Activity Center.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Dan Branda could have one of you come up and make a few comments about Mr. Peterson's, uh, thoughts on Fifth Avenue? And Two Twenty Second, I think.
If it's Brandon Carver, Engineering Services Manager, if it's the council's will, I could come back also on September eighth, under admin report, and provide a more detailed, um, history, I guess, as to what we've done at Fifth and Two Twenty Second. But, in, in brief, um-
That'd be a good idea.
So, but in brief, to Mr. Peterson's, um, concerns, you know, we have taken several steps from, uh, investigating, installing some curb warning signs at the curve, uh, implementing some raised pavement markers to see if that would curb some of the centerline crossing, and, uh, then installing some raised tubular delineators, uh, which are about eighteen inches tall, uh, through a portion of the curve, and then most recently, installing two-speed humps on the beach park road, which a lot of the, uh, I would say, users in that area are kind of, uh, trying to curb the demand, if you will, for some of the, some of the, um, uh, users that Mr. Peterson may, may have witnessed. And really, um, we're sort of at the end of our toolkit. I think we're, we're looking to maybe partner with the police in, in some enforcement, and I wouldn't wanna get out, out in front of the police on this, uh, as far as working together to make sure we really have, um, uh, a, a, a repetitive problem, or just a couple, you know, outliers. So, um, that's kinda where we're at, from a short statement, so.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Well, I think, uh, an update on September eighth, so we can see what you have applied already, and, um-
And if possible for us to have done a little bit of enforcement. Chief, I know your guys are pretty thin, but, um-
And any other solutions that you might have in mind?
Well, and really, uh, I know that I've been available, and Gary and I have talked, uh, several times in my office, and, um, you know, it, it, it's difficult to, to really see this as a, uh, necessary, a, uh, engineering, um, problem, um, but, but maybe bordering more on a, on a quality of life issue. There's a hill there, vehicles accelerate, some of these vehicles have loud mufflers, and, um, that may exacerbate the perception of speeding, but, uh, it's, uh, be happy to listen to George, and see if he's got anything to add.
Um, what I will tell you is, the area we're talking about isn't too long of an area, so, it's been brought up at supervisors' meetings repeatedly on what we do, and on the, on the heels of, um, the Pokemon craze, the, um, issues just prior to Pokemon. If you remember, we had a couple of incidents of violence, and, uh, and then the marijuana smoking, uh, issues along the trail, so, um, quite a few smaller issues, but very high-profile problematic issues in that area. One thing we've talked about, and I, and I've talked to, um, Garrett quite a bit about this, um, over the months, is how do we get people there at the right time? Because they're either coming in, or they're coming out. And even when people call, uh, by the time, even if an officer leaves a station to go down there and address it, they're long gone. So, it's a matter of having to sit there. And at times when officers have sat there, um, maybe just monitoring Pokemon, trying to do a couple things at once, smell marijuana, watch Pokemon people go, and look for cars, it's really, it's something you try to do. And some days, they'll catch people coming up, there's been a few citations written up by the ABC store, um, but then again, um, it's not very common, and oftentimes, if an officer does sit there before you know it, they're called away. So, it's a challenge, and it's a, it's a difficult situation, um, you know, and, and one of the things I wanna make clear to the citizens is, yes, it's, it's, it's been called "small fish." I don't address it as "small fish" because it's a community livability issue. It keeps people awake at night, and it's a safety hazard, it's a danger to pedestrians walking, so we're looking at all those things. We're not minimizing the, the problem. What we're doing is trying to figure out how we can approach, uh, this problem, uh, while we're approaching the other problems, uh, with the time we have, and, and take the opportunity to address multiple issues, this being one of them. Uh, it's a very difficult issue, like I said, and we're not ignoring it, we're trying to, not trying to run away from it, but it's like, uh, trying to catch fish in, in your hand, and it's, it's very difficult to do. But, we will continue to address it, we'll try to come up with solutions, we'll continue to talk to community, uh, work with, and we're hoping, uh, with the paid parking, that actually helps us find a solution. Sometimes, a solution like that, that's, that's larger in nature, and focused on that area, creates, um, other opportunities, uh, for enforcement or, or other types of collaboration. So, I'm looking forward to that. But again, it, it's not something that we're gonna just ignore and, and make go away, we're gonna continue to try and address and do what we can.
Thanks, Chief. And, uh, that's my report for tonight.
Quite a report for your last one.
Yeah.
I made jokes about us tracking to midnight, but we might.
[laughing]
Okay, will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of minutes. Item two, approval of vouchers. Item three, day of concern for the hungry proclamation. Item four, acceptance of donation of real property from Schroder Trust and Suzanne Schroder. And item five, draft resolution number sixteen dash one-two-one, setting public hearing to consider draft ordinance sixteen dash one-two-one, amending chapter eighteen point one-zero DMMC to rezone certain port of Seattle and Washington State Department of Transportation properties from residential to business park and higher-density residential uses. And that concludes the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
移到
Okay, I will give the motion to, uh, Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Is there any item out of the consent agenda that anyone wishes to remove?
I don't wanna move it, but I had a question about item number four, and that's, why is the acre and a half unbuildable? Is it slope? Is it road access? Doesn't perk for water? I don't know what was the, it's a pretty big parcel.
It, um, there are challenges, apparently, with the slope. It's, there's several creek, or open water streams on the property that make it very challenging, apparently, to build, uh, on that property. Any parcel is eligible to have a single-family home structure built on it, but there's, going through the permitting, it, it, um, it must be challenging to get permits for that site.
Thank you.
So, I think that's what that's intended.
Okay, thank you.
So, you just needed the clarification?
I just had the clarification.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda passes, six-zero. At this time, the council will go into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss qualified applicants per RCW four-two-dot-three-zero-dot-one-one-zero-one-G labor negotiations under RCW four-two-dot-three-zero-dot-one-four-zero-four-A, and our executive session is expected to last forty-five minutes. We're back from executive session. This brings us to our first public hearing tonight, um, over draft ordinance number one-six-dash-one-zero-two, amendments to the city's comprehensive transportation plan. And I'll turn it over to Brandon Carver.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brandon Carver, Engineering Services Manager. Just to briefly go through the, uh, ordinance, uh, on the screen, there's some background that basically, uh, the city has a comprehensive transportation plan that was a twenty-year look from out to twenty-thirty, and, uh, we, we perform some periodic updates about every six to seven years. We've just completed one of those, um, and, uh, mid-last year, we began working with a consultant to update the growth and, and, uh, employment projections out to twenty-thirty-five. We've gone through, uh, the committee, PSND Committee, with our, uh, findings, both back in November and, and February this year, and we've noticed this, this meeting. Briefly, just to summarize some of the key findings, um, really, the, the punchline is the Great Recession slowed things down, and so you'll, our initial estimates for growth and employment you can see for twenty-thirty were, were, uh, were on the screen there, those have been revised and sort of kicked out another five years. Um, and in general, uh, traffic growth has been moderate, with some notable growth on a couple of key streets, Sixteenth Avenue South and Des Moines Memorial Drive. Uh, if you wanna look at further detail on the volumes, uh, page eighty-five of the packet has that information. I do wanna point out two other key, uh, points in the update. Uh, we've added two new street connections, Two Thirty-Sixth Lane, which connects Pacific Highway South to Highline College. Uh, we, we envision this primarily to be built by development and/or sound transit, um, and also a new connection, uh, between Twenty-Fourth Avenue South and International Boulevard. This is at the north border of the Furneys property, uh, would provide a vehicle, vehicular connection, pedestrian connection through that, uh, section. There's no connection right now between, between Two-O- eighth and Two-Sixteenth. It also may incentivize or help facilitate some development, just because it cuts down that super block.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, lastly, there were some policy recommendations, uh, that were highlighted in the update, that, that essentially would ask the council to look at these and consider them in the next major update, which would likely be in about six, seven years. Uh, one related to, uh, considering the special needs of all transportation users, and we essentially do that now in practice. Uh, we work closely with our transit partners, uh, but just actually having a, a written policy. And there's some draft policy language that's in the, uh, in the, in the update, uh, as a starting point. And then also, uh, the other element is, consider looking at level of service, measuring level of service, not just for vehicles, but also pedestrians, bicycle users, and transit users. So, just kinda broadening, uh, how we measure the, the level of service experience for users of, of, all users of the transportation system. Uh, I'll leave the suggested motions on the screen, and at this point, um, questions? Or no?
No, the mayor has to call for speakers.
Yeah, that's-
It's now time for comments, comments from the public on draft ordinance number one-six-dash-one-zero-two, amendments to the city's comprehensive transportation plan. Comments are made from the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak, five minutes for organizations. Has anyone signed up to speak? Since no one has signed up to speak, I will call three times. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Second caller, is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Third call, is there anyone? There's somebody back there. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing no one approach, council, are there any questions? I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to suspend Rule twenty-six-A in order to enact draft ordinance sixteen dash one-zero-two on first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Musser, I believe the, went to Councilmember Kaplan. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oops, aye.
I move to enact draft ordinance number sixteen dash one-zero-two, amending updates to the city's current comprehensive transportation-
Okay, um, motion was made by Councilmember Musser, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Discussion? Councilmember Kaplan.
The, the council actually worked on this a lot last year, and I thought we had actually adopted it last year, so I was kinda surprised, uh, remember it was on the agenda tonight. Um, a lot of good work's been done by staff and others to figure out what our future needs are, and- are, and this outlines it very well, fits in with the rest of our comprehensive plan, which we spent a lot of time on last year, in addition to the parks element, which I think we adopted not that long ago, a few months ago. I think, I think all the pieces are filled in, so.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no more comment, all those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, six-zero. And I have to, yeah. Okay, an ordinance of the city of Des Moines, Washington, amending the comprehensive transportation plan for the city of Des Moines. Let's see, it's 9:55.
We extend the meeting to 10:05.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, extended to 10:05. Item number two, draft ordinance number 16-103, transportation impact fee rate study. Staff presentation, again, it's the Brandon Carver Show. I will now open the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brandon Carver, Engineering Services Manager, here to discuss draft ordinance 16-103. A bit of housekeeping, I noticed some small edits that I've highlighted, I'm passing them down, or through the city clerk passing them down, these relate to page 139 and 140 on your handout. Following our recent update of the comprehensive transportation plan, there's essentially built upon that a list of capacity projects that the city needs to complete in order to accommodate the planned growth. In the previous traffic impact rate study, this list of 20 or so projects totaled about 105 million, and basically, spreading that portion of, the portion of growth related to development within the city led to a PMP car base rate of $6,088 per new PMP hour trip in 2009. I'm just kind of bringing us to where we are today. The council elected to set that base rate at $5,000 per PMP car trip, and provide a phase-in schedule beginning at 2,500 and kind of gradually increasing over four years. As I mentioned before, the economic slowdown, council made some, modified the phase-in schedule through some ordinance actions, and right now, as we said, the current base rate has gradually gone up to $6,060.25 through inflation, there's an inflationary factor, but however, it's being applied at 85 percent, so the key number there is the current base rate in the city of Des Moines is $5,151.21. If the council were to do nothing, that base rate would be assessed at the full 100% January 1st, and you can see there, the, that figure would be $6,060, about an increase of $900. So as I mentioned, as a follow-up to the CTP update we just completed and adopt, and you enacted and adopted, we worked with Fair and Peers to update the traffic impact fee rate study. We now have reduced the project cost totals down to 83 million, and of that 83 million, 48.5 million can be attributed to development that will occur within the city in the next 20 years. However, as I showed, as we discussed earlier, the growth has slowed, so there's less trips than the previous impact rate study, therefore, you do the math, you take 48 million, divide by 7,600, the amount of trips anticipated in the next, new trips in the next 20 years, and you get a per-trip rate of 6,380. That is your maximum base rate. This is sort of a flow chart of how that fee is calculated. You have 83 million in project need, capacity projects, we don't have any existing deficiencies, any failures, currently, a level of service lower than our standard right now. City growth, this is development within the city, about 58 percent of that growth, projects related, and therefore, you, at the end of the day, you get your cost per trip. As I mentioned, that's the maximum allowable, the current base rate is 5,151, and these are just some figures to show you, per single-family home, this is what is charged right now off a square foot, just kind of give you an idea. The staff recommendation is to basically adopt the current 2016 base rate that's in place right now, make no changes, but just take that rate and continue forward. And just a note that the Pacific Ridge mitigation fee is not a part of that, those fund neighborhood improvement projects that were SEPA mitigation projects in the Pack Ridge area. This is just a, as you may ask, this is just kind of a chart showing different impact fees charged by different organizations, it may be tough to read, I'll point out, this is Redmond out, out here, Sammamish is not on this list, they're at about 14,000. You have Redmond, Linwood is in there, Duval, Fife toward the top. Des Moines, and this was two years ago, Des Moines is right about here, it's gone up to right about here, just in comparison. And more locally, I just wanted to share, this is my second-to-last slide, it was looking at some of the other cities nearby, as it relates to a single-family home, so kind of comparing apples to apples. However, I did want to point out that both, or all three, Auburn, Kent, Federal Way there also charge a school impact fee that ranged between 3,000 and 5,300, so it's not, not always apples to apples, and each city obviously has its own unique funding resources and/or resource challenges, and, you know, for Des Moines, we rely heavily on the traffic impact fee as our local match in grant funds, grant applications, and it's a key component for building these projects moving forward. And that's the end of my presentation.
Well, there's, okay. Okay, it's now time for public comments on the draft ordinance number 16-103, transportation impact fee rate study update. Comments are made from the podium, please state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak, five minutes for organizations. Is there anyone else that's signed up to speak? Okay, since no one has signed up to speak, is there anyone wishes to speak? That's the first call. Second call, is there anyone wishes to speak? Last chance over in the corner. Third and final call, is there anyone wishes to speak? Okay, now I'll ask council, if they have any questions.
Just one, on this Project 7, is that 16th Avenue 5 or 5A?
Oh, it's both. It's both.
I just wanted to make sure it was.
That's a correction I made, on the limits, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And on this Kent-Demoine widening, are you going to have to acquire more right-of-way from some of those properties?
Likely, we would need, we would need widens, definitely between, I think, Pack Highway and 24th, that piece is likely to be five lanes wide, you know, two lanes east direction, turn lane, bike lane, so there's going to be right-of-way need. You can see the total project cost, you know, from Marine Drive to Pack Highway, 28 million, big, big.
Yeah, I can see, from 24th West, I can see those narrow roads and the rockeries and everything.
Yeah.
There's a lot of landscape that's going to.
At this point, I need to remind you, everything has to be in the form of a question.
That's all, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I will now close the public hearing.
Move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 16-103 on first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Move to enact draft ordinance number 16-103, updating the transportation impact fee rate study.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kaplan.
Yeah, I appreciate the rate study being done, the fact that we've been knocking projects off of the, off of the rolls is actually helpful, because what it's done is it's allowed us to actually keep our transportation impact fee at a percentage of what we could have been charging all along for a lot of years. That goes to, speaks to the staff being able to get grants and other funds, so that it isn't entirely borne by the developers in terms of what's going on, and even for single-family residential homes, it's below the $6,000 fee, which was at the top of the range anyways. So, with that, I commend it.
Any other discussion? All those.
I move to extend the meeting, one minute.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, okay. No more discussion, call the vote on the draft ordinance, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes six-zero. An ordinance of the city of Des Moines, Washington, amending DMMC 12.40.060 and 12.40.100, adopting the February 2016 updated the transportation impact fee rate study, and amending the transportation impact fees on development activity. That concludes our business for tonight, our next meeting date will be September 8th, 2016, and it'll be a regular city council meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Discussion?
We've got 30 more seconds.
Okay, all those in favor, so you raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.